Leave this in tonight's agenda. Your lord, please allow us to keep a level head and to make decisions that are needed for the city. In your name we pray. It's called.
Mr. Taylor, Mr. Sherman.
Drew.
Mr. Dunphy.
Here.
Ms. Grant.
Here.
Ms. Booth.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
I motion to excuse. Mr. Taylor and Mr. Booth.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the October 11th? And October 25th regular meetings and the October 26th special meeting?
Mr. Dunphy.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes, Ms. Jones.
Yeah. Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Dunphy.
Yes.
Before we go further, can I make a motion to amend the agenda to add ordinances? Um, under second reading, um, eighty-seven, twenty-one and eighty-eight, twenty-one?
Absolutely. I'll second that motion.
Is that the second reading? Uh huh, yeah, yeah. Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, any citizens' comments? Okay. Um, any business and organizational comments? Any committee discussions?
We had a very short finance, just started on the twenty-twenty-two budget. Um, we talked about the, um, previous city attorney bills.
Okay.
What was the discussion?
And we're bringing in ordinance program tonight.
Are we, is the committee's recommendation to pay all of it or be part of it or just sort of make it change?
I think you guys have to have that. Just begin negotiations, what place?
Okay.
Authorizing to do so.
They don't have that.
Oh.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. Okay. Anyone think else? Right. Department updates. Who do we have tonight? Chief Barber?
So, uh, twenty fifty-five is our second engine. It's actually out of service again. It, uh, failed the required pump test a couple of weeks ago. We had a company come down, an authorized repair company come down, run through some tests. It could not get to fail. But it did fail on the pad during testing previously, so, and we have to take that out of town tomorrow. Have that dropped off to that company so they can run a test for a couple of days. So they can find the problem and fix it. That truck in question is our nineteen ninety-nine International E-one. Out of all our pumper's and engines, that's the oldest truck we have, a larger ladder truck. So eventually, we're gonna have to look at, uh, again, replacing these apparatus and have a replacement plan. I haven't got that established yet. When I do, I'll approach city manager with that, and then we can approach council at that point. Um, the FEMA AG grant was awarded successfully. The award has been received. The city does not have the money in the bank accounts yet. I haven't requested funds because it changes some things a little bit with FEMA now. They wanna see the money spent before they reimburse. Before we could request the money, as long as within thirty days, but they're spending the money, they were, they were good. They don't like to see the money in their accounts over thirty days because they don't want the cities to generate. You know, any type of interest off that money. So I have opted to wait until, uh, twenty-twenty-two calendar year. Uh, that money is good for a year from FEMA. So I'll wait until January rolls around. That way, we can spend the money out of capital improvement, and the money goes right back in. Or wherever, um, whoever wants to take that money from. Um. Most of you know that I require all firefighters, ship members to train while on ship, along that training. Part of that training, uh, was took place on October twenty-first. Myself and two additional certified instructors, that are fire instructors from the, from the fire department. Participate in live burn instruction for the Tri-County GPS Fire and EMS students, for those that don't know. A number of us, three of us, at the fire department, actually instructors for that fire and EMS program at Tri-County. Live burn took place at the Wells of Volunteer Fire Department Training Academy's Burn Tower in Wellsom. That's a required training for any fire instructor that wants to do any type of live fire training. That's important, especially in this area, there aren't very many live fire instructors. So to get that and get that established for our department is something that's really needed. Uh, fire prevention education was pushed back due to census counts in the city. We were able to get in, and we actually interacted with every child in the school and Nelsonville School, from kindergarten through fifth grade. So that was a success again this year. Uh, this year's trick or treat. We, the hours were changed. We knew it was gonna kind of be hit and miss. It was either gonna be popular or unpopular. We ran around town giving out candy, I stayed in contact with PD. What we noticed was still at seven o'clock. Most of the people went inside, stopped giving out candy, and most of the kids were not on the streets. So it's something for us to think about for next year. Uh, donation letters for the Volunteer Fire Department Seventy-third Christmas Basket Program. Were, uh, sent out on November first. And the basket application will be available through November twenty-sixth. And I'm proud to announce that we had the venue changed, uh, to here in the city. After last year, we were kind of stuck by ourselves running the program. We had a neighboring department that, because of COVID, felt that it wasn't safe to do that. We picked up the slack with city employees, it worked out great. To the point where I've had the same city employees come to me and say, hey, we'd like to do that this year. It makes it easier for our department, being a paid department, to be inside the city and be here at the department. And it makes sense to help out with PD, uh, they helped out last year. Even the utility department helped out. So we moved that venue to our department, that way, the same city employees can help out again this year. Um, for those that don't know, this past Saturday, November sixth, we responded to a bomb threat at Kroger. Um, we, it, yeah, it sounds kind of funny, a bomb threat at Kroger. But we were able to clear the building with OU Bomb Squad, Bomb Canon Unit, and Nelsonville PD, nothing was found or no threats found. The building was soon turned back in with the death of our employees. Um, most of you seen the hometown hero banners that are starting to pop up around the square. There's actually one over here at the VFW as well. We've been helping out the American Legion Five-Two-Nine. Installing those banners for them in between Mercy Run, the fire department has, it's worked out great. And I am in the process right now of getting one of those banners for Senior Firefighter Jeff Arms. And I have passed along my information to Chief Fish as well, or Officer Scott Dalton. They have, because of the history of the city of Nelsonville, and the lack of line of duty deaths, there was only one for the police department, and that was back in the eighteen hundreds. They have reserved the center area of the square just for Jeff and, uh, for Scott. So as soon as I get that information to them, the banner will get in, and we'll get that established, get it put up. Um, still working on numbers for EMS transport, I know a lot of council members that came to me and asked me about this, and, and I've seen, I've seen a lot of interest, so I'm still working on that. And our civil service test with the fire department is still scheduled for December second. We're doing good, but we're still down four part-time firefighters right now. So our full-timers are actually picking up a lot of shifts, and our members that are working are just continuing to cover shifts. So it's important to get candidates in, but we know it's hard to retain employees that are part-time. It's hard to get a buy-in to the city, and we understand that, it's, it's part of being a part-time. But, uh, what we're working is still trying to do some retention right now. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Chief Barber?
That bomb threat, wouldn't, wouldn't they, did he hand them a note or something like that?
I don't have the details. It was, uh, you know, we take all the threats, we try to treat every threat, has to be incredible. So we cleared the building, um, with Nelsonville PD units, and with OU Canon Unit, and there was no threat.
SO and PD, uh, put the guy in today for other sort of questions, so it should be something.
Should be some type of press release here.
Okay, thanks, chief. Mr. Cullen?
I wanna start off by thanking everybody that was out there Wednesday night, and we had our, our big week that I'm sure you all know about, because we had no water. Um, it took a lot of people, it was a little tough one to get figured out. It's the contractors that are working in town came in help. Bob Boffman came in help, Mark Hall came out and helped. It was, it was a tough one for everybody, and I just wanted to say thanks to everybody that came out, thanks to the guys, and, you know, give it all they had until almost four o'clock in the morning to make sure everybody had the water on Thursday noon. Mill Street is getting vague, starting tomorrow, the intermediate will be put down on Mill Street tomorrow. For Wednesday morning, they'll do the top and pulling, pulling will be done Wednesday also. So everybody up there, it'll finally be back to the way it should be instead of a landmine. We put a D-ragger in the lift station over here at VFW. They came in and it's electric. If it starts to back up, because we had some issues with it over there, it'll actually kick itself and run backwards. Try to kick out any rags or anything. So far, so good, haven't had any issues. So hopefully, that gets us out of the water with that for a while. Tomorrow morning, the lease schedule will be going out, there'll be a press release for it, we're doing it on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So that'll be put out tomorrow, so if people need the lease picked up, they can call in here and get put on the list. Come in and pick it up every morning on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and head out, you know. Saint John's, Saint John Street is on the new water main now. So we, we killed the old water main today. So hopefully, we can start getting cleaned up up there and get that backwards it needs to be. The water main's been put in on Monroe Street in North Alley, as well as Walkin Street. They still got work to do, they gotta tie over services, uh, put fire hydrants on, but the main itself is in the ground, it's just not fired up yet. So hopefully, here within the next couple of weeks, that will be done awesome. They started on Kimberly Road today. So that one's gonna take a little bit of time, run out through there, there's a lot of stuff in the way. Um, the sweeper will be back out starting Thursday. We'll be back on regular schedule with the sweeper come Thursday. So it'll be running five days a week. Get that out, if needed, and every other weekend, we can run it on Saturday and Sunday. So. That's all I got. It's just been, we've been pretty crazy, had some, like I said, major leak and everybody trying to get caught up with everyone, so.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Cullen?
Is there a special number call for the lead pickup or just call the main number?
Just call the main number, is what we've done in, in the past. Becky's been fielding those calls and.
Actually, there is one more thing for anybody listening at home in Mill Street, there's no parking on the street between seven and five. Starting, small one. Seven AM, there's signs up, they had some issues today, there was eight cars parked on the street up there. Three or fours while they were trying to prep it for asphalt. Having a hard time getting them moved, we put no parking signs up. So between seven and five tomorrow, no parking on Mill Street.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to second reading, on eighty-two dash twenty-one.
This is the ordinance from the reading, the first meeting in October. Yeah. And I loved it the way I got it, it was under suspension of rules, but.
We read it anyway.
But that was only first reading, so I didn't realize that last time, so this will be, can we just do second reading then today? Okay, all right. Okay, you ready?
We're ready.
An ordinance authorizing city manager Scott Frank to accept the Ohio Department of Transportation Small City Grant. Small City Program Grant Award. Whereas the city applied for a grand award to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the CR thirty-three slash CR one seventy-eight roadway improvement project. Whereas the project was selected by the Small City Program. Whereas the city desires to accept the grant award from the Ohio Department of Transportation Small City Program before the deadline of Friday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager Scott Frank is authorized to accept the grant award from the Ohio Department of Transportation Small City Program. This is not gonna be, is this still gonna be in an emergency?
No, that was in second reading, yeah.
Okay, um. Do an act of my council on second reading the eighth day of November, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. Any council discussion on this matter? Motion to adopt.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
All right, now we're on to ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty-one. Second reading.
An ordinance authorizing changes to the shut-off code and procedure to require payment of all charges owed plus fees for reconnection. And amending the abatement program to include the two-tier fee structure for the abatement policy. Thirty dollars for five hundred dollars in coverage, fifty dollars for one thousand dollars in coverage. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is setting a shut-off code procedure and adjusting the abatement policy. And whereas this will be in the best entrance, interest of the city of Nelsonville and customers to reduce water leak liabilities and decrease the number of shut-off utility accounts. Now therefore be ordained by the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, that customers who experience utility service shut-off must now pay their full balance owed plus a shut-off fee of seventy-five dollars before service can be reconnected or reinstated. This includes past debalances, most recent balance shut-off fee of seventy-five dollars, and all other charges owed at the time of proposed reconnection. Once this payment is made, it is understood that the balance of the customer account will now owe zero dollars to be eligible for reconnection. There shall be a two-tier premium for water loss abatement policies for the city. Thirty dollars for five hundred dollars in coverage, fifty dollars for one thousand dollars in coverage. The abatement policy is a premium paid that covers the policy holder for up to the coverage amount of their utility bill if their utility bill is excessive due to a leak or water loss event. The ordinance shall be effective at the earliest moment provided by law. Do an act of my council on second reading, eighth day of November, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, any council discussion on this matter?
Yeah, uh, Taylor, when does that take effect? Is it January one?
So this would.
The abatement part of it.
Yeah, it would be for next year's abatement, um, which is due January tenth. And I think the technical answer would be this would be effective in December eighth, or December seventh, yeah.
Well, I was just talking about the abatement part of it, just.
Yeah, it would only, it would only, that part would only apply to the new sign-ups for next year.
Okay. But you would pay that at any time or?
Yep. Yep, we're gonna get notices out pretty much anytime after this meeting, so.
How are you getting these out?
We're gonna mail it, yep. And then we're gonna do, start doing announcements and everything.
Okay, motion to adopt, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dunphy.
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
And then we have ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-one, on second reading.
An ordinance increasing the sewer rates effective January first, two thousand twenty-two, and trash rates effective April first, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas new sewer rates must be increased effective January first, two thousand twenty-two, and trash rates effective April first, two thousand twenty-two, to meet the funding requirements for the new sewer plant and to pass along contractual increases in trash service charges. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio, that affected January second, two thousand, January first. Two thousand twenty-two, the sewer rates are increased as follows. The in-town fifteen-hundred gallon minimum rate for two thousand twenty-one was sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents. In two thousand twenty-two, it will be eighteen dollars and forty-one cents. For every one thousand gallons over the fifteen-hundred gallon, the two thousand twenty-one rate of ten dollars and eleven cents, it will be eleven dollars and twelve cents in two thousand twenty-two. Out of town, the fifteen-hundred gallon minimum for two thousand twenty-one was twenty-five, ten. In two thousand twenty-two, it will be twenty-seven, sixty-one. For every gallon, every thousand gallons over the fifteen-hundred is fifteen dollars and seventeen, seventeen cents in two thousand twenty-one. Sixteen dollars, sixty-nine cents in two thousand twenty-two. Hocking County Commissioners, per one thousand gallons rate was four dollars, thirty-two cents in two thousand twenty-one, and will be four dollars and seventy-five cents in two thousand twenty-two. Trash rates are increased as follows, from twelve dollars and fifty cents effective April first, two thousand twenty-one, to twelve dollars and sixty-six cents, effective April first, two thousand twenty-one, per customer, per month, for curbside refuse and rubbish collection for one residence or unit, and up to seven bags. Recycle bin and service include per month, per customer, per month, for rec, curbside recycling. Two dollars per container per month, or optional rental, mobile towder or equivalent. Five dollars per sticker for special rubbish item. Or extra vehicle pickup is optional. The ordinance shall be effective at the earliest date provided by law, doing an act of my council on second reading, eighth day of November, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, any council discussion on this?
I have a question, um, the Hocking County Commissioner rate. Um, is that like some kind of set plan we have for them on how much we can raise it per thing? Because it doesn't seem proportionate to the other raises.
It should be the same percentage.
Okay.
And, uh, and just to explain to everybody at home what that is, that's for Murray City. Murray City, since it's Hocking County, they build a flat rate for all their sewer, and they maintain the lines over there, and, you know, all the mains, and they just pay us for the actual product that they send us.
Com stops, right?
Correct.
If I think back to when the agreement started, um, the contract said that we had to start at four, if I remember right. And that was their initial rate, if that makes sense. So any changes you guys have made sense, was just percentage changes on top of that. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
And the reason these are being changed also is to keep up with the, the cost of the sewer plant and the increases that these need, need to be to keep up with the project, correct? Yeah, and the trash increase is just what the contract's going up to. There's no increase for the city.
All right. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Grant?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
I don't think that happened.
No, I got one.
This is gonna begin pretty get full.
All right. We have a bunch of stuff that is under suspension of rules, we don't have enough to do that, so we'll just make a first reading.
First reading?
First reading, one.
I'd be like. Oh, thank you.
I'm keeping my mind, no.
No. An ordinance authorizing city manager Scott Frank to enter into accept and or authorize the contract change order for the twenty-twenty water system improvement and declaring it an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract with twenty-twenty water system improvements. Whereas several items of the contract need adjusted in order to complete the contract. Whereas the change order detailing the needs, changes, and reasons for the changes is attached as exhibit one. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter into accept and or authorize the contract change order for the twenty-twenty water system improvements as shown in exhibit one. Second reading, okay. The ordinance shall be effective at the earliest moment provided by law.
Correct.
Doing it acted by council on second reading, the twenty-second day of November, two thousand twenty-one.
All right, ordinance ninety-one dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce.
I'll introduce.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the amendment to the Ohio Small Group, the OSGP Consortium Agreement and Bylaws. Whereas an amendment to the Ohio Small Group Pool Consortium Agreement and Bylaws may. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City auditor Taylor Sathich has the authority to sign the amendment of the Ohio Small, Small Group Pool Consortium Agreement and Bylaws may. The ordinance shall be effective at the earliest date provided by law, doing an act of my council on second reading, the twenty-second day of November, two thousand twenty-one.
All right. Thank you, real.
Just for council's awareness and the public, the amendment is the board of the Ohio Small Group School, uh, is, um, trying to make it slightly easier for a member to withdraw, uh, like Nelsonville, who wanted to go with a different provider. It's still pretty tough to pull out consortiums, it takes like a year's worth of planning, but I think they shortened the window by a couple of months. So it's small change grants, it doesn't impact premiums or any. And it's friendly to us.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ordinance ninety-two dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing city manager Scott Frank and city auditor Taylor Sathich to enter into negotiations on outstanding bills. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has outstanding bills that need negotiated. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager Scott Frank and city auditor Taylor Sathich shall have the authority to enter into negotiations on outstanding bills. This ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, doing an act of my council on second reading, on the twenty-second day of November, two thousand twenty-one.
All right. So, uh, we are for the city managers' report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I do have a question, maybe I missed it, ordinance ninety dash twenty-one, the change order. I know we don't have the folks here to pass it on emergency, but I do need that to proceed forward with the water. It's to, uh, make the changes to quantities for the Mill Street project that they're getting ready to pay tomorrow, and then also to button up the Saint John Street, uh, project. So the urgency is based off the asphalt plant for the Saint John project, okay? So.
Are you saying you need a special meeting, I mean, like, we can't pass it tonight, is our?
Right, so if we can do it later, unfortunately, this week, if everybody can make it.
All right, so we, uh, I'll talk to, I know you're out Tuesday and Thursday.
Tuesday and Thursday.
Are you good every night this week?
It's pretty short, right?
Right, yeah, be real short, yep, before Survivor. You're good, I know, you're good every night. You're good, I know, you're good every night this week? Okay. Alright, I'll speak to Justin and to Cory and we'll get this coordinated, okay? Thank you. Thank you for that. So, I'll run down. The meter replacement plant is going ahead of schedule right now, so they were originally estimating two meters per day, right now they're averaging ten meters a day of swapping them out. It's going really well, this company is doing a fantastic job cleaning up after themselves with a couple of hiccups in Buckville. Uh, one of them we had tonight, but we called the contractor back out to clean it up, so it shouldn't be resolved, if not now, I'm very sure. It's done. Perfect. The, we found out, um, since our last meeting that we got two point seven million dollars in grant for phase three. Hundred percent grant, so we're not paying anything back on that, that's, uh, that is sewer on. That's sewer, uh, sewer repairs on Monroe and Meyer. Sewer added to railroad, sewer added on to, um, Trash Power Road at the backside there, going through those communities, uh, behind the Runions and so forth. So, and there's, and then upgrading a lot of the rest stations in town. So, it's huge, it's, uh, very much needed and I was really excited that we got it all on, right, so no loan. For sewer?
Yeah.
Well, it'll include sewer, you're talking about the old pool?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we will now have sewer down there that we can add the. Yes, so.
Who's gonna?
They won't be sitting there. Uh, they're, I'm not sure how they're gonna do it, if they're. They're gonna bore under, I believe, so.
They've already bored the water.
Right, so.
Oh, okay, cool.
So that's good news. The, we found out, and I sent an email to council, but we did not, currently we have not received any of the monies for the waterline project going underneath the Hocking River. There is still more monies coming down the House Bill one forty-eight chain, so it is possible that it still could get funded through that. And then we also found out today that their, uh, the feds pushed more infrastructure spending, which potentially put that in line for something else, so. Having given up hope on it, I was a little bummed we didn't get it on the first go-around, but hopefully we get it, uh, soon. Met with the county the other day for them to rack and stack their, uh, basically paving projects, that's the one we put forth that would have been four hundred grand, four hundred loan. Uh, the county was very generous and gave us their second highest amounts of points. Would I really doubt that it'll make it, so we won't get the final answer until, uh, uh, the end of this month. And that's when it goes to the state and the state competes. But, uh, based off traditional, um, allotments of points and funding and everything else, we're probably not in there. But, could be, and that's for next year, so if we don't get it this year, we're trying again next year. And learn some things on that. The, I wanna echo what Jason said, you know, the team was out there till four in the morning the other night and, uh, that was thirteen hours of overtime, I believe, for each one of them. And they was out there and it, it just kicked their butt. Literally, the guys were walking around with witching sticks and metal detectors to look for water valves that the caps were buried ten inches under the soil. So, uh, it, it was very much a labor-intensive ordeal. And then, uh, and then also to echo what Jason said, as far as the lift station here at the BFW, we have not had an overflow since adding the last bit of electric parts, which is really good. And then just a reminder to everybody, we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant money on emergency to replace that. Should be going out for advertising tomorrow. And as soon as, uh, as soon as we get the bids in and, um, timeline for the supply chain to bring the materials in, then I can give you an estimated time when it'll be complete. We met with, uh, the regional jail and EPA last week. Um, rather productive meeting, as far as the debris coming down from the jail and potentially the other two correctional facilities are all in the same line to go through this, uh, BFW lift station. And they are actively looking at solutions to catch the bigger debris from it coming downstream. And as I shared with them on our end, we're also beefing up our infrastructure to handle it. Um, ideally, we're gonna put what's called a muffin grinder, which is just a big huge grinder that catches everything first, grinds it up and then pushes it down. Also, part of our design is doubling the horsepower of our pumps, currently we have seven horsepower pumps, we're gonna put fifteen horsepower pumps in the new, uh, lift station. Along with new piping, you know, with the new valves and so forth, so. Hopefully, we can, uh, put that to bed and that problem solved. We are having a problem with, um, as they call it, the Oakley lift station over in Buckville. So we're looking at potential solutions for that, very similar to the one we have here, is with the, the ragger, the electric device. It'll be slightly more complicated because it's not three-phase power over there. But they do have a solution and they're working up an idea, the company is working up a schematic now to get us a price on what that looks like to hopefully solve that problem. And then between that and that grant we just got for two point seven, hopefully our lift stations are in pretty decent condition at that point. And that. That's all I have for you folks tonight.
Could they possibly put a lacerator on there too?
A master aeriator?
No, ma, ma, uh.
Muffin grinder?
Muffin grinder, mass.
Pre-remitted to jail?
Yeah, well, over there in Buckville as well, I mean, is that something that's feasible or?
Um, not with the way that it's set up. Uh, so it's my understanding muffin grinders have to feed through, uh, gravity and then it can be pumped after that. So our lift stations, the only way we're able to do it up here is we're gonna put the muffiner up the road, so it catches it before it goes through the parking lot of BFW of the downstream. And, uh, over there, we don't have the spacing yet unless we do a complete or redo construction. Ideally. Lacerator. Ideally, if this, um, the ragging device works as advertised, it'll solve our problem for significantly less money. Their basic, uh, the one they put in over here, the basic price is twenty-five hundred dollars, which is nothing compared to a motor. Motor's ten grand.
Right.
And, um, so if we can get that put over there with the variable, it's, it's adjusting the currency to make it act like it's three-phase instead of being three-phase. And, uh, it likely could solve it more, what's that? Sure, I don't know.
Push the power up to.
So, ideally, for five grand, we can hopefully fix that one over there as well, getting our lift stations ideally in good shape, which will be really nice going into the new sewer plant. That's great. Thank you very much. Good bet for shit. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Frank? Thank you, Scott. Alright, we're to the good of the order, um. Just Grant, as far as the.
Um, I'd just like to say thank you too, to the water guys and everyone that helped because it was nice to have water in the morning when we got up. And we've had so many water leaks in the past eighteen months, two years, just non-stop.
It was unfortunate that we, we had to do what we had to do, but it was lucky enough that when we had to shut it down, it was late after everybody had already pretty much laid down from the nine when we had it back on in the morning before they got back.
And we appreciate that.
Yep. I heard the toilets kept going. Ms. Jones?
Um, sure, I actually, I, one personal thing, I just wanna say happy birthday to my daughter and to my mother, um, and my sister Dee. Little birthday, come on up here. Um, and then I also wanna, um, mention something that I saw last week that Nelsonville York High School has, um, created a new, um, high school newspaper. Electronic newspapers, I don't know if anybody has seen that yet, but I happened to get a copy forwarded to me last week and I just wanna congratulate the school and the, um, teachers over there who are getting it together, it's a great, um, opportunity for the students to participate in some of these things creating kudos for their classmates. It was very well done, I was very impressed.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
So, I would echo what Carla said and remember winters coming upon us and them guys go out on water breaks, I mean, they gotta stick their hands down in that freezing water, so. Just, uh, if you see them out there, thank them because that is rough.
Only thing I'd like to say is, um, it come to my attention that there's some people in need in the community that says that council has lost the voices and ears of the community. Now, listen. We all, this is a hard enough job, uh, when you vote on stuff that costs you money. Uh, I don't know one council person that's on this council that wouldn't listen to you if you came up and talked to them. Our emails are posted. Um, and I kinda take offense to that, a little bit, because we are out here for display and take all kinds of criticism. But yes, we, two people ran unopposed, so. And also I'd like to say congratulations to those who got elected, Mr. Coleman, Ms. Jones, uh, Mr. Booth, Mr. Sherman, uh, and Mr. Taylor. It was, uh, really great, so congratulations to all of you. You're not, no longer appointed, you are elected, so, which is great. Um, also, I'd like to say thank you to, I got to watch the Nelsonville York War Fried Football game. Our boys, uh, fought very hard, did not give up. They were playing a team that was much higher ranked and, uh, it was a good, it was a, it was a great game for quite, quite a long, quite a, you know, until, for a while. And, uh, I was proud of them for not giving up, so. Uh, to the, to the Nelsonville York Football Team, we're your head high. So, um, that's all I have, so, move into adjournment. Uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna make sure with, um, Justin and with Cory, make sure one can.
Cory probably won't be available all.
Yeah, he's working shifts, so till Wednesday, I think.
Yeah.
I think Wednesday's like his weekend. If I'm correct. Um, I'll make sure with Justin, so. Okay, and then I will contact you immediately.
One hour if possible, completely forgot Buckville lease.
Oh, yeah. Where we stand.
Go ahead. So, uh.
Absolutely.
The, the, they presented us with a potential contract, uh, for us to look at and go, so I would like to call them Police and Fire Committee, however, I would like to wait till Mr. Tiger, Mr. Tiger, uh, is currently ill, so I'd like to wait till Mayor's available to come to the meeting if you are all okay with that. And then, uh, council can go through all the details and, uh, see what you think and they'll come there, so.
Yeah, I, I believe he's not, not very well right now, so.
Alright, motion to adjourn.
Take a voice, it's a tie.
I'll just put you both in there.
Ms. Jones, yes. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.